Five o'clock. Apparently you haven't charged for the city. There's gonna be no playwrights this year, no bonuses. It's gonna be hot candy Christmas. English humor, I remember.
Alright, okay. So, are there gonna be playwrights? Oh, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously Mayor Ben Shire is not here and obviously I'm sure that he would love to be here. He is very passionate about the city and he's also very passionate about the school. And so, maybe the first thing we can do is go around the table and start with introductions. We could start with my cycling Tour de France buddy to my right.
Prefer esteemed colleague.
Always.
Tom Ruffer, City Council Ward Two.
And Tour de France?
Future Tour de France, working on it.
Okay.
Working on it.
Darren Hafford, City Council Ward One.
Molly Cole, School Board.
Lane Danielson, School Board.
Rod Speedall, City Council Ward Four.
Steve Vegasah, School Board.
Scott Rachel's Ward Two.
Jim Fish, Ward One.
Missy Herman, School Board.
Jerry Davis, Secretary of State.
Andrew Brumseth, City Minister.
And I'm mostly Anthony Hicks, and I'm Board Four. And obviously Steve Angelo, Mayor. So I think the first topic this evening is safety and traffic issues. And I'm not sure who would like to talk about roundabouts and Freiber intersection.
I could start out just a few general comments. With our fifth grade move to the Kennedy Building, we have another 200 students. Many of those students are being picked up and not riding buses or parents. So we're adding more traffic to that site. We continue to grow in our lower elementary, so we anticipate more students at that site. And it is a very, very busy place in the morning. It's a little simpler because parents drop off. They come in two different areas off of Freiber by the big steps, door O. They drop off a lot of middle school students on that side. And through the circle drive by door A, again, it's basically it flows. It's coming in, dropping out students and leaving. In the afternoon, it's another story because we have a lot of stacking up of cars, lane blockages, different things happening, trying to take left turns out of our parking lots or hindrance to good traffic flow, lots of things going on. So obviously, we're worried about student safety, what can we do? We entered into an agreement with the city that would study this problem. And we have many staff members here that are more knowledgeable than I do about that. But one of the big issues is Randolph-Freiber intersection, especially people trying to take a left turn there. And we talked about stop signs, but I'll let others talk about warrants. It didn't, the need was not there except during specific times. Now, the last time we met, Jeff Benner, we talked a lot about a roundabout, a small roundabout at the Randolph-Freiber intersection. So we asked for the meeting today so we could talk about that and see how we could partner together to help traffic flow around the, specifically around the Kennedy and Roosevelt buildings.
I think a many roundabouts are great. I like roundabouts.
Make it go home.
I mean, maybe Brian got comments that they could add.
No, I, and Brian can chime in here too. But you know, we did spend a lot of time with SRF in the school district. And I think they did a great job putting a survey out for the public. And a lot of the parents at the school, we got a lot of good feedback from them that went into the study. And I know at times, we've had some good conversations about that Randolph and Freiber intersection. But I would agree with Jerry that a mini footprint roundabout is probably the best option. We've looked at everything from stop signs to signal lights to realigning the intersections. And I just think a small footprint roundabout makes the most sense. Obviously, some cost associated with that. But I think that should be the primary objective to try to clean up that area with a mini footprint roundabout. So the other thing that I'll just add to what Jerry had already mentioned is there are some low level cost things that we are looking at trying to implement for this coming school year. One of them being a designated right turn lane into the cafeteria parking lot to try to avoid some of the stacking or queuing in the driving lane, as well as trying to avoid some conflict at the crosswalk that's located in that area. So we are working on some short term things that we think can help alleviate some of the problems. But I think as we look a little bit longer term, I would agree with the small footprint roundabout. And you know, obviously, we're gonna have to get some numbers on total costs for that and where the funding is gonna come from. Yeah, no, thanks Chief. No, just to back up a little bit too, you know, somewhat months ago, the City Council went in agreement with the school districts to participate in the study of, this transportation study of this area. And we're talking about just small subsets right now of the whole, what the study area was. That also consists of Randolph and some of the building and parking lots. So yeah, one of the short terms, and I have just received a draft report that I'm just under review and then be distributing, but we're hoping to send us out. We got tiered levels of improvements generally based on derived costs. And yes, a mini roundabout is potential, but it's a long term one. But long term, that's to be defined. But what really comes straight to is redoing some striping and inserting a turning lane off of Freiber and some other small traffic improvements. We're almost there and we hope to give a comprehensive work session introduction to the City Council. And we'll try to arrange how it will be delivered to us more as well. So we're getting there, but we're exploring all the lower hanging fruit options first for implementation and review and see how that makes those improvements. So we're nearing completion. I hope to have a final deliverable quite soon here for it.
Do we own enough land there to do that? Are we gonna have to purchase some land or where are we at on that?
That is, that is one of the biggest issues with roundabouts. But with the school districts, I think we have, we have a lot of flexibility in that given intersection with potential. But many roundabouts, you know, a general roundabout's about a million dollars. Now, many roundabouts, they have to be refined going through detail. But keep in mind too, we're also working in the county's jurisdiction right now. They've already consented, you know, being able to have a jurisdictional slot, we're working on. But they're pretty amenable to what the city may present to them. So such as the striping, if that's approved and presented and approved, I would anticipate them granting us authorization to do this sort of work. When it comes down to the cost share participation, when some of these devices, if they don't need the warrants, it's difficult to get state aid funding for them. So that's where the creativity is gonna have to be on when it comes to such as a roundabout. That's something definitely is gonna have to be considered.
Say Brian.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
You say mini roundabout, the roundabout on Alco, is that a mini roundabout as well or is that?
No, I would know that with the island and everything, raised island, no. That's your traditional roundabout.
So is a mini roundabout like half the size of the one there? I'm just trying to figure out.
Don't have extensive, I'm not sure if it has the barrier in it or if it's a drive over. I'm not sure what type of device they quite are proposing or SRF are still developing, what their thoughts are in regards to the definition of that mini.
Do you know the MINDUP, the MINDUP accepted by those?
In some certain instances, but they'll have a little big review on it. It depends on your AETs and certain levels and effectively the driving speeds as well.
Brian, I, do you know who you work for, the city or?
Yes. Sorry, you say city.
Brian, could you, when you get that from SRF, could you get them to, if there's one in the area so we could look at it, you know, in Fargo or?
Well, certainly.
Alexander, I mean, I don't know where it would be.
Certainly, it's just a draft and that's, you know, just with the cost.
If they could find one we could look at, that would probably help everybody.
I'm hoping to, we're just going through the final edits.
I think what Scott was saying is that physically it was a roundabout and somewhere in the state of Minnesota that I can't quite remember.
Yeah, and there's even smaller ones that are effectively marking on it. Quite, not quite sure. But yeah, we would have to do some more investigation what's moved back.
So if everything went perfect, when could they start construction? If we decided whose school the cost and the studies were done and everything was done and all that? Any idea when it would be?
No, we haven't got to that level yet. It's listed in here as a long term. I believe my meeting with the county to discuss the conceptual design for new roundabouts at Freiber and FER and then also at Union. I believe I have that coming up Monday. So I was hoping to see how this could be introduced to the market in the Mayan and that whole corridor, Freiber corridor study and enhance that. That was kind of, we haven't had that meeting yet, so.
No, is that determined?
When that could be. I'll ask the more specific question soon enough, but it can be done in the summer or we have to re-partner. Depends on who's participating in the funding. If funding was secure, approvals, I would say it's potential.
Maybe you answered this already, when would you know how much the school would have to? I mean, you said you were partnering the funding. Do you have any idea like when you know how much the school would need to put up for that? Or do you have to see the proposals and how much the cost is first?
Ah, that might be as far as the cost share and everything. It doesn't meet the warrants and the warrants need for state aid funding. So if the city's allotments and everything, if there's a partnership, that's something we definitely have to review. I don't have an answer for it.
Well, what I'm just saying about, you know, is when you start putting it all together, it's something, it's a, this didn't just develop as an issue. The fifth graders came over that intersection, that problem, and we get going. So, but that, but as a board, when we talk about it, it really seems like that would be probably the least intrusive too. Because otherwise, we're mostly looking at taking some of our very limited green space for parking and stacking cars and letting smoke go in the universe and all of that stuff. But yeah, so that's part of why we came today was because we want to let you know that we're mental to really trying to get in and get that.
Nothing further on now, obviously Brian's got the draft report, so it's available. We'll get it distributed. So moving on then to street reconstruction project and East Mount Faith area.
Yes, just an update for that, and I'm not with the city's, excuse me, with the city's, with the school district's concern. But the City Council authorized and we're working on some of the process funding for reconstruction, generally the Mount East, Mount Faith area that includes from Sheridan to Burlington, Highland Avenue from Sheridan to Burlington and also Summit from Sheridan to Burlington. At this time, that, that project is scheduled pending a few approvals in there to hopefully start, pending approvals to look for via 2019 reconstruction timeframe.
Brian, does that include Sheridan to that?
Yes, Sheridan from, yeah.
Sheridan and three streets ago, east.
East Mount Faith, yes, to that area. There's been discussion about incorporating Burlington from East Mount Faith to Randolph. As we all know, that road's not very tierated as well. But that's kind of the funding I think is gonna be trying to establish and obviously cover those costs.
Thank you.
We would anticipate if it's approved, that of course, we would have interim completion dates in that project, but this would be through the summer too. And have some completion dates, milestone days to contractors and be prior to school start beginning of the new year.
Just also from the school's perspective, just kind of wrapping things up. We will be working with a crossing guard going from Kennedy to Roosevelt, especially in winter, kids going over the ice arenas. So we'll have a crossing guard there that was recommended. We'll be doing that. And that was after school. That's again, the main flow of students walking between buildings. It's after school, going to activities. We will be doing a lot of parent communication at open houses and handouts about where's the best place to park. We want them to use the buses, to be very honest. That would be the best thing is have less, less traffic, use our bus system. But if you are picking up your child, there are spots and times, especially 3:30. If people wait 10 minutes, all the buses leave, they can drive right into the bus parking lot, pick their child up right there. So it's a real, you know, people hate when I say it's a 10 minute problem, but that's where the bulk of the time, 3:20 is when school gets out. And 3:30, the buses leave, pretty much everyone's gone. I mean, there's a lot of people that are gone already. So it's that 10 minute where everyone's in a rush. So if we could just be patient and allow traffic and be courteous and all those good things, that would, that would help a lot. We're gonna keep the buses going out to the left, to the right. Yes.
So how does the street reconstruction project in East Mount Faith area that you're planning to start next year, how would that impact completion of a roundabout? With potential to even start that next year?
Generally would. They're independent projects, at this time they're not incorporated or not even initiated by the City Council at this time.
So you commented that you weren't sure why we brought it forward. We want to know a little bit more what you were planning. I mean, I just put in our two cents worth that if you wanted, from the school's point of view, the board's point of view, we would prioritize the roundabout. Because we know we're not kings of the universe, but just thought it'd be worth bringing that forward to give the perspective. That's how, you know, that's how strenuously we would think about roundabout and clarifying up that traffic aspect there. So, so that was our two cents.
No, I anticipate SRF representatives from there, the consulting engineering firm will be doing a formal presentation to the council and also the school board too as well, to get a better understanding of the issues, which I've mentioned, it's just not that intersection. It's looking at a more holistic approach to address everything. Obviously, with restriping potential on Freiber, costs were, you know, thousands versus hundreds for a mini roundabout. So just taking that tiered approach based on funding. I think, correct me if I'm wrong too, Brian, just so the school boards are aware, a lot of the East Mount Faith project has to do with infrastructure. So the funding source is coming somewhere other than what we would normally use for roadway improvements and that. So that's not just as easy as like canceling, using that money from that project to do the roundabout.
Yeah, it would, they kind of wasn't, they couldn't be prioritized or whatever, but that's very.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question on, I've heard occasionally from residents about the congestion and the struggles that happen in that area in that short time, as you said. Are there any internal adjustments that can be made that would alleviate that in any way in terms of school times or anything or has that been considered?
The issue is with school times is all of our kids come to Kennedy. And so all of our elementaries come a little bit earlier. But if we let the middle school out, they still have to wait for the high school to get out to get on the buses to leave. So the buses can't leave any earlier. And so we say we have 800 middle school students. We could let them out early, but only 100 of them say, or 200 are getting picked up. Now we got 600 kids doing unsupervised or out in the hallways before they have to get on a bus. So we're, we're balking at that right now. It's different if you're in a different building, letting one out earlier, which we already do. We let McKinley and Adams in Cleveland out early, so then they come to the bus site. So they're ready to go. Once 3:20 comes around, the middle school and the high schools that ride the bus, they just go right out and they go. So they're gone within 10 minutes. So that's our plan. But letting a middle school out or a high school out at different times really doesn't help us.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of a question and I realize you thought this through. It's that not the middle school, high school is a large group, but a subgroup of those that were picked up versus those that rode the bus. And if there was a five or 10 minute difference, would that alleviate, you know, if they had a priority to get out of there, either one of them, would that help alleviate your situation? I understand the middle school problem. Yeah. So anything we can do to help, I think we'd wanna do it and yeah, as a council.
I mean, I think if we could, if we bought them, that would help time fly. But I also would agree with Alan, if we could actually combine the products, then that's obviously some efficiency there if we're going to build a roundabout. And many roundabouts, I mean, you'd really put them all up together and it's really not, you don't need them in space. But I know MINDUP has some critique always about.
Well, and if it was going to combine it, Kyle mentioned too, we're doing a reconstruction on East Mount Faith where our sewer enterprise fund and those funds established helps pay for those. I would, with my next meeting, mention with the county as far as the Freiber and Union, given the vicinity, my recommendation would be to look and see how we could incorporate the potential of a roundabout into that type of work. Very similar, it's all in the same corridor. It would make the most sense because portions of those are funded through state aid. That would be the most applicable at this time, I think so. You know, and part of it to be discussed too, some analysis was not only a roundabout, but to realign the Randolph- Cecil intersection, how it does a little jog and everything. That's also an option too. So a roundabout's one alternative, but then realigning those intersections still has proven benefits to it and that's part of the analysis. But then it comes down to the cost analysis with doing that sort of work. So if it's a council desire, I will explore incorporating one of the final deliverables from this council, SRF, into the county project. Because we're already funding a portion of, this city shares, the city has a joint agreement with the county and the city as far as doing cost shares with that.
And just to note, if you drive on 59, you'll notice a different slope on the roundabout on 59 than we have on our roundabout the edge. And so MINDUP may have allowances for that. But I was imagining a long bus, you know, students getting jostled by too big of a lift there. And so there are differences in the approach as it goes onto the road. And I think we should make sure.
Literally, I mean, you can make a roundabout by just breaking a three foot circle on the ground. And that.
I've never seen that.
Maybe in England.
It's scary looking, I just Googled it and it's scary looking.
But it's actually safer too. It's safer.
English cars are smaller.
But it's better for safety. Because you can put restrictions going into it, which narrow it. And I mean, I think that's something that you should also look at is that you narrow the road going into a roundabout so that you can't approach at a high speed. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do to slow traffic down. And because roundabouts can be fast if you know how to negotiate. And that's on roundabouts. So maybe we should move on to the school's future plans and possible land.
You don't tell it or?
No, you.
You wanna be the captain, alright. Well, let's do a little history here. 2006, '07, '09 in that area, we were a five and six section school. As we stand right now today, our kindergarten will be 10 sections. Our first grade is nine sections and then we're eight sections all the way up through eighth grade. So we are pretty much averaging that 200. So we are, we're growing and we'll be looking at space needs. Our McKinley and our Adams buildings were built in 1937. And so we're looking, we're really, this is really future planning here is we would like to work with the city on possible land. Where should a new elementary school go? I don't know the year, 10 years down the road, where should that go? I know Morehead worked with the city and they put their elementaries and their middle schools in spots and housing developments came up around them. It was, I just feel it strongly that we need to partner together so we know what each other is doing here and do a really good job of planning. So this would clearly be in the long term plan. We have, as long as we're a eight section school, we fit at Kennedy, we fit where we're at. But we're starting to see that a little bit of creep in that really low elementary kindergarten, first grade, so yeah, it's actually exciting. We are growing, we are not dying.
And part of what our discussions have been is that it seems to be more generally accepted by the public if we could find a spot within the community as opposed to the more, it seems like more is to find an outline, patch of land and build a school. So I kind of got excited about the prospect and I mentioned this to Steve just to, maybe we'll get into the riverfront project. I mean, gee, you got a couple of great spots right there that nobody's using. Or something along those lines to just have the revitalizing aspect of it and the continuity of the community and all that kind of thing. So like Jerry said, this is a little bit far out there, but there's some good brains at the table.
I think the requirements too from the state, it's so many square feet per student, I remember. Correct. And I think based on what we're looking at for the needs, I think it's gonna be somewhere between that 33 to 40 acres that would be required to put up a new K through five, K through six, whatever type of city.
Would you be looking at combining this, one side rather than two sides? Is that what should be your preference?
For the elementary.
Right. Fifty six. Yeah, we could potentially be looking at preschool through sixth grade or something like that too.
Cleveland will continue to be used for a long period of time. Has the gym and new classrooms there for sure. And what, you know, to be determined, you know, 10 years from now, who knows exactly what you would do. But that certainly could be a preschool center or the project we're doing now. We'll be working great probably for preschool. Maybe that is five and six or four and five and we need a K three building. You know, we just have lots of options, but we just know at some point we're just going to run out of classrooms and we need more classrooms.
Forty acre section, chunk of land is a fairly good sized land. So where something like that would be available, whether it's within the city limits or close within the city limits, that's something we can start looking at.
So Adams and McKinley are landlocked and they're small sites. So the likelihood of the state approving, you could do a classroom or two, but nothing that would suffice the needs that we would have. Cleveland has a little bit more space, but really if we're gonna, going to really be efficient and do it right. And again, Adams and McKinley buildings are 1937 buildings, you know, good buildings right now. But by the time you get a purchased land and pass a referendum, you know, how far down the road, we'll have a 90 plus year old building. And what, you know, is that the way that you do? So we have to.
And we have a new city planner coming on, so it'll be nice to introduce this topic to the city planner as well. But I was gonna add the daycare piece, not necessarily, it's part of the plan. But as you look at housing and options, daycare in areas, usually with parents less driving.
If you can swing up into the.
Yeah. So I think it's a great thing to introduce early. I'm really pleased because the planning will help us all. Great.
I was, I was gonna say the same thing. We just had a new city planner start last week and this would be a pretty cool project to have him start working on. So if you could get us those parameters that Lee mentioned. Yeah. What the future projects will be and what that might look like. And then we can have it on our, do you have anything else to add?
Sure, the planning commission has talked about the need or desire to have a future land use plan developed that would be looking out usually there 15 years or so on how the community would grow, where are those opportunities for growth? And that's where some of these other communities like Alexandria and Morehead have had those future land use plans and overall comprehensive plans in place to guide that future growth so that there's some certainty for, for everyone in looking at what, what we anticipate and what as a community are we supporting growth patterns towards.
And as I say, a side note, this is the first joint city council and school board we've had in quite a while. And some of the topics here I think are going to be ongoing, so I would suggest. And some of the topics here, I think, are going to be ongoing, so I would suggest we meet more frequently, keep people up to date, especially with the traffic issues and land, different planning. I just think it would make some sense to do two, three times a year, at least, to bring some data. We can bring enrollment data, and different things, to help them. Blaine and Melanie want more meetings.
I didn't think you were going to say bring data, I thought you were going to say bring pizza.
That could happen.
Ben would have been here. So that's, we just want to introduce that topic, and just get it on everybody's radar, that, you know, we need to plan for this growth that we're having.
I think Blaine mentioned, you know, some of the land along the river, which is true, and we've got some vacating, of some businesses, you know, along in that area, that some aren't leaving, but there's also the land, just to, in general mention, the south side, which is across the Prairie Woodlands Learning Center, there are large amounts of land there that have spatial requirements that would be conducive to dropping off people, and, you know, and expanding. So I think we do have options that are not outside of the limits, I can think of three right now, but it's great to start this discussion.
You're right, it's been 10 years, but at least if we identify the land, or at least where we want to be. Right, moving on to community arena.
Yeah, I got it, if you want to keep it up, I don't know what to change.
Mark's going to. The chiller.
You should introduce yourself, please. You're the chiller.
I'm the chiller.
Now I think we need to know you.
My name is Mark Maston, I'm the business manager for the public schools, have been for a very long time. Many, several years ago, we talked about expanding the capacity for the arena, to the chiller capacity for, to make ice, especially in seasons like September and April. The reason we're looking for that is because the current chiller was designed for handling the Kennedy Secondary School. And during the months of, like, October through March, we don't use a lot of air conditioning, and so our chiller can be used to make ice for the arena. When the demand starts to go outside of that, in the September and April, we need that air conditioning, and there just isn't enough capacity to do both air conditioning in the Kennedy Building, and to make ice in the arena. A proposal came forward to us, where a chiller became available, for a very low cost, but it needed to be, it was a former county chiller. It sat for a few years, but has been refurbished, and is in the process of being readied, to be put into our school building, to augment our current chiller. And so, that would give us more capacity to do what we want to do, is both chill the school building, and create ice for the arena. It's been about a two-a-year project, for a variety of reasons, but currently, that chiller has been painted. All the equipment that is needed to make it operational has been received, and installed, within the unit itself. It has been tested, so it has been holding pressure, which is, I understand, a very good thing, because it has some pressure. The taps, in other words, the valves and stuff within the school building have been installed already, so that when the day comes, they set the unit, hook the pipes, turn the valve, we're ready to go. Obviously, it's a little more complicated than that. We have a cooling tower that needs to be installed yet, but I guess, long story short, is we're quickly coming to a point where that reality should take place. I cannot guarantee that it'll be up and operational here, yet this September, but I know the installer has been anxious, and I know people have been asking me questions, and when will it be done? When will it be done? But it looks like it's going to be fairly soon. So that's the communication that I wanted to tell you.
Mark, it's my understanding that that chiller is actually about a third bigger than what we thought it was, is that correct?
Yeah, originally, we thought it was going to be about 170-tonne of capacity. For comparison, the chillers that we have for the school right now is about 215, 235, somewhere in that ballpark. But when you go into ice mode, our 235 comes about 115. So this 170 capacity of the additional chiller, I don't know what it'll need for ice, but we now found out that this 170 is actually more around the 260, 280 capacity, than what we originally thought. And so, we are getting a chiller that truly has a lot more capacity than what we first believed. And that's a good thing for everybody.
Thank you.
Since Shiva's damaged mine, just thinking about it.
It'll make me feel like Warwood again.
This happens all the time with us.
So, funding for that project, the sales tax that was collected to build the arena, it netted quite a bit more than what was needed to actually do the project. So the extra funds are paying for this upgrade, and to date, I think we're about $60,000 into this project, and the estimate for the project is somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000.
Which, for comparison purposes, the chiller put into the school building here about 10 years ago, was around $750,000, $800,000. So getting this used unit back operational will be a good cost-saving measure.
So nothing more on that, moving on to item four, community education needs and the library project timeline.
Yes, I'm Erin Smith, I'm the library director. And just a quick update on the timeline for the library project, we're still on track with our original timeline. So looking at substantial completion in November, and hopefully, you know, a grand reopening celebration in January, early 2019. So that's just a heads-up there, since we're all getting together.
And the importance, I think, not only to the school board, but all of us, is that the school has some big plans with the space that the temporary library is in today, so as soon as we get this new one built, and we get moved out of there, you guys can get rolling on your project, and maybe you could talk just briefly about that.
Right, we're finalizing numbers right now, and if all comes to fruition, we're currently, our early childhood is on the east end of the Heritage Building, and we would be moving to the west, yeah. So the school district's programming, but we would also partner with Children's Corner, so they would have their own space, which is exactly where the library is right now, but we would have common corridors, and common playgrounds, and eating areas, and we'd be able to expand offerings. So we would, currently, we do a lot of half-day options, we would do more full-day, every day, and Children's Corner certainly would have expanded hours for childcare, and so, and again, an expanding capacity. So I think it would be, it would be the closest thing to a childhood center, early childhood center that the community has, and we would be able to serve a lot more students, so that's a need, obviously. Anyway, he's been working hard on that one, to get that one together, so it seems like every meeting is workforce, and finding workers, and finally, finding childcare for the workers, it's, and throwing a house in there, too. So it just seems like that, that's the hot topics the last year, year and a half. And we're hoping, we're hoping, you know, when they're moving out, we hope to have the plans ready, that we're starting construction when the library moves out.
We could leave you a few shelves of things.
We'll let you know, we'll get back to you on that one.
Give him a few shelves.
Yes, exactly.
Right, and the final topic is, on the agenda is gymnastics.
I asked to have that on there. Jerry and I have been talking about this since February, or maybe even March, about what the gymnast status is at the school, and there's so many stories going around about what's going on up there, and why they're looking for a new place. I just wanted Jerry, or Mark, to give out some information about what's going on, and what's happening up there, so.
Well, a lot of this, what precipitated is, we're looking at our Roosevelt building next year, where the old gym, if everybody understands the old gym, the barn a little bit, that's where gymnastics is located. And right now, we do not have working showers in the locker rooms, and there's some work that needs to be done in the facility. And then couple that with our late spring, we need space for our baseball, softball, tech, lots of things going on where, when they can't get outside, especially this spring, was very, very difficult. So there's, so what we have told the gymnastics club is, next year, by March 1st, 10, somewhere in there, we are going to remove everything from the gym, we're going to do our construction that we're anticipating in the locker rooms, clean everything, and then the spring sports will be able to use that, depends on the spring. You let me know, you know, whether it's two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, six weeks, you know, and then as soon as that is done, the construction is done, everything goes back. And then, in the future, what we would end up doing is, that first part of March, again, we would have that for four to six weeks at a time, for our spring sports, and then the equipment would go back. Long-term, you know, if we keep getting bigger and bigger, at some point, we'll have to use more of Roosevelt, but we're ways out from that, you know, we're talking, our kindergarteners and first graders are the ones that say, as long as we're an eight-section school, we fit into Kennedy. And that's a long period yet, you know, the first graders getting up to, you know, Kennedy's in quite a few years, so, but it does come quick, I'll say that as well. And so, whether we move a grade level over there, and need the gym, or if they go back to the Kennedy Building for abandoned gym, and their, those are to be determined, but, you know, we did meet with the gymnastics club, and we said, you know, long-term, there's a maybe that we might need that space, but I think we're a few years out yet. You know, Mark, is that?
That's, well, basically what I was going to say.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions on the gymnastics? Obviously, the gymnastic group are looking at more buildings than the art institute, and they all do it.
Right.
Is there any other topics that anybody would like to discuss, and as Jerry said, we don't meet very often, but maybe we should make an effort to do that, as school is an important part of the community.
Just a suggestion on future meetings, that if we could bring any projects, or, we might collaborate on, that we haven't talked about, you know, so we could get tests for water, some of that, just at our next meeting, we could suggest collaboration possibly. And I'm thinking of some of the newer sports, as well as some maybe an older sport, but I mean, there are new sports that are coming online now, there are movements for kayaking clubs, rowing, there's archery, there's different shooting, you know, and I just would like us to think long-term about that, you know, providing the best overall facility for me involved in that land usage, you know. So, if we can just leave that open, and have a chance to put in some discussion topics at our next meeting.
Maybe in closing, ask, maybe, Andrew and Jerry, look at a couple of dates, balance of the year, so that we could get them penciled in, because nobody's that busy, so.
We've been looking at fifth Mondays for this, because both the school board and council have open Mondays, and I think Jerry and I were talking, October is the next one.
October, December.
And we could, from now on, plan to have a fifth Monday, or at least we'll reach out to one of the fifth Mondays.
I mean, even if we penciled it in, and if it doesn't happen for a reason, you know, it's on people's schedules, and we can...
I think there's enough stuff going on, we should try and make them happen, we need to make an effort to make them happen.
I mean, because that would be quarterly.
But for example, if the traffic issue is time-sensitive, we don't need to wait till October, we'll figure out. So we're very interested in working with the city to make that happen.
But I think if we can pencil in some schedule dates, then we can always adjust them.
We'll be in contact, okay. And that was the reason we didn't wait until October for this meeting, is because we're undergoing our budgeting process, and if we're going to do a project that, we need to know what our cost is going to be, so, so we'll have more finishing days.
And by, totally, we will, you know, where the art institute building and the gymnastics group is setting to, and hopefully, you might have a chiller on that, but you won't need it in October, so. If anything else. Alright, thank you very much for coming to the city.
Appreciate it.